Perhaps much later in the evening, we will come out of executive session and immediately adjourn the meeting. Let me look to Jeb and to Todd to see whether I have stated everything accurately from your perspectives.
You have. I wondered whether we, unless I missed it, Mr. Chairman, before we get started with some comments, remind people how, if they do want to, to talk to us, how they go about doing that.
Yes, I'm going to have Yasmeen walk us through that right now.
Okay.
Certainly. So attendees will see that now on your screen, there's a link in the middle of the page there to sign up to make a public comment. Again, in the interest of time for this evening, we're going to ask speakers who haven't had the opportunity to already speak to try to sign up first. And we will also try limiting comments to one minute each this evening. There is an opportunity, as always, to submit written comments to the board, and we have a new link up for tonight, and that's at the bottom here of the page. It's the Survey Monkey link, and I will post this again later when we are in the public comment period, so people have access to do it again. But again, it's signing up right now. The link is right there in the middle of the page.
Okay. Any questions about the protocol and plans for the evening from trustees? Okay, Jeb, would you care to bring us up to date after another day in the week?
Well, yes, I'd be happy to do that, and I could be relatively brief because there hasn't been much time and to do a lot of digesting from all the important testimony we heard yesterday. And I would acknowledge that folks are still sending emails and attached letters and occasionally a video. And, you know, honestly, viewers, they're heartfelt. They can't help but move you. They make you think very carefully about what we're about to do and recognize the magnitude of the recommendation that the chancellor made. And I'm really expecting that the trustees need some opportunity to digest your input before they're reaching a conclusion. That said, you know, for the reasons I mentioned yesterday, we do need to make a decision in the near future. We owe that to provide some kind of certainty for our students and prospective students, for our faculty and staff, for our communities, so they can plan. And, you know, depending on what the view of the board is, that decision may change, and it may be influenced somewhat by what kind of response we get out of our executive branch and the legislative branch and congressional folks as well. So we are on a tight timeframe. You know, our finances are in a precarious position. They're in a more precarious position, in other words, more strained as a result of the cost of the COVID-19 situation. I don't think I need to review those for everybody, but, you know, they have increased the operating deficit we have for this year up until to the $7 to $10 million range, and I would say at the top of that range. And then, you know, looking forward to next year, enrollment and other things are major X factors, but we can expect to have less student revenue next year based on the enrollment trends that are being talked about in higher education across this country. So we do need to take action soon. What I've gathered from the board trustees is they want to take action with adequate time to deliberate, recognizing that we don't have a lot of time, but want to make sure that we are not rushing to a judgment. I have heard the board of trustees on that, and I've also heard from the board trustees that they do want to know, you know, what our political leaders have to say. And, you know, we have been in communication with both legislative leaders and the executive branch. I saw somebody that sent me a little summary of a caucus today in the Vermont Senate where the President Protam mentioned that he and the Speaker of the House, and I'm sure that the chair of the Appropriations Committee would agree, are interested in helping the Vermont State Colleges, at least in a bridge fashion. And their hope is that we can craft some kind of a process where there's some involvement in reaching redesign kinds of potential options. And that's a bit of a moving target in terms of when that might be done. We're, you know, trying to let people know we can't delay very long. You know, we are currently, Mr. Chair, I believe, scheduled to, I think we were talking about it. I don't believe we've wanted, having another meeting early next week to try to make a decision then. It's still, in my opinion, something that we really can't delay very long. But we really would like to find out what kind of legislative response. At least I understand the trustees would like to, and I think that makes a lot of sense, to find out what kind of response and assistance we can get and when we can get it. And we're hoping to have that happen this week. That is my hope. But, you know, it's not really something that's totally within our control. So, you know, I recognize that the changes that the chancellor has proposed are significant. They do cause all the things that people have said, you know, real difficulties for students at the end of their career, difficulty for students that won't be able to find another place right away to go to college. And all the impacts on family lives and communities are real. But the securing the white paper process that we went through, last securing the future white paper process last summer and fall, pointed out that we have, you know, a real decrease in the number of the college age, traditional college age students. We have, you know, we have probably, it was pretty clear that we have more infrastructure, bricks and mortar than we need for the expected population, and it's not necessarily in the right form for what education is going to be needed in the future and what students are going to be looking for in the future. So I really believe that we have to find a way to address that. I proposed one means to do it and stand by that, but I also recognize that there may be some other decision makers, like the board of trustees, that may have some questions and want to digest what's been recommended. So that's really my opening comments, and I know that last night, the executive session, you know, probably ended before people had a chance to discuss all the relevant issues that were in there. And so, you know, I'm looking forward to participating, and then I expect the board of trustees may want some time by themselves, too.
Thank you, Jeb. I did have one question, and Jeb, I'll send it in your way, but it may be that senior staff may also know the answer. I know the Senate in Washington passed another aid bill today. There was a lot of talk about aid for hospitals, banks, and others. Do we have any early sense from our people in Washington whether there's anything explicitly in the new bill for higher education?
I saw that news come across a short time ago and have not had a chance. I haven't heard anything directly from our congressional delegation that there is, but I plan to reach out as quickly as possible to find out. I know that there'd been some talk that maybe something would be in there as well. It does appear that, you know, if I understand it right, that the guidance is coming on the use of the $1.25 billion to the state of Vermont may have a little bit more flexibility than was originally anticipated. So, you know, that may be a source of temporary help anyway. It's one-time fund, so it's not going to solve an ongoing budgetary situation, but it could help us if we wanted to take a little extra time. We could consider that.
Thank you. Thoughts and questions from board members? It's hard to read everybody's face. I have to kind of go picture by picture by picture. Okay, then Yasmeen, I think that we should go ahead and turn to public comment if we could.
Yes, certainly. So on signups for tonight, for folks who've signed up, we are kind of looking and we'll call on people that we know haven't had an opportunity to speak first. So if anybody did sign up and we skip you and you still have something to say and there's time remaining, please go ahead and sign up again. But I will be calling the first person up and also naming the second person in line. So first up, we have Brady Rainville, followed by Victoria Carlson. Brady Rainville.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. My name is Brady Rainville. I am a Johnson alum, and I'm an employee for NBU. Chancellor Spalding, over the past two weeks at Senate and House education meetings and at a VSCS board trustees meeting, you stated that all other options would be considered before thinking about any closures. Specifically, what day over the last two weeks did closures move up the list of possibilities? Please describe three other solutions that do not contain any closures of a VSC campus, and will you commit to releasing the outline details of these plans, which I would expect to have been completed based on your statements? Thank you.
So I'd be happy to try to answer that, Brady. They were various scenarios that were included in the modeling we did, which included the extreme of what happens if you close the system down? What happens if we went to a non-residential model altogether? And what happens if we want to try to protect the important programs of Vermont Technical College and still move away from a bricks and mortar campus and then protect a liberal arts college? So those three were part of that modeling analysis. We also, at the time, tried to find out what is the likelihood that the state could give us more money? And we also, you know, had a process in place that was, a result of the securing the future process last summer and fall that required the presence to develop action plans for the future. And those were underway, but, you know, the COVID-19 situation came in and caused those basically to be put on hold as we're dealing with, trying to figure out whether students should go home or not, how long they should be home, how do we deal with getting people into remote delivery, and what we should do with student refunds, for example. So, you know, we were looking at options, and, you know, the option that I have recommended seems to be the one that provides the most benefit to ensure the long-term sustainability of the Vermont State College's system. I'm not saying there might not be other ones, but, you know, it's the option that made the most sense to myself and some other advisors.
Thank you, Jeb.
All right. So next is Victoria Carlson, followed by Michelle Wade. Victoria Carlson.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Okay. Good evening. My name is Victoria. I'm a Northern Vermont University Linden alumni, class of 2018. Many people have thanked you for your time, but I feel it's only fair to hear our voices, students, faculty, and alumni. This is a short time, so I'm just going to kind of keep it simple. I was part of the class that had to endure the merge of LSC to NBU Linden. We lost our identity on my senior semester, but I observed NBU Linden handled the merge with grace and patience. Your plan was flawed from the start, and with little notice, we were notified about the possible closure. I can't help but speak on such pride to be a Linden alumni. I've seen so many beautiful letters, videos, and articles created to show the love of our campus. That's the only positive I see right now as I'm fighting for my home. I don't understand the justification to close three schools, each with their own true identity. I ask you to take the perspective as another Zoom meeting to hear students speak to let me understand and take this opportunity to become a student, alumni, faculty, and community member. In high school, I was a jock. I came for sports and I left. I had no passion for academics. Everyone had their dream college. And at Linden, I was a substitute teacher, a peer leader, and college steps mentor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria.
Yeah.
I'm sorry that we are, we need to be brief with such a short period tonight.
Yeah. Apologies. So next is Michelle Wade, followed by Siobhan Anderson Judkins. Siobhan, sorry, Michelle Wade.
Good evening, board, and thank you. I basically want to just give you a real quick plug for the fact that I am a VTC grad times two, LPN year and RN year, with years in between to work so that I could afford to stay in the local community. Hence, then I went back to school, and I've been VTC faculty since 2007. I've touched the lives of over 135 nurses in the state of Vermont. It is imperative that nursing education be left around the state of Vermont, including the Randolph area, because the nursing workforce is already significantly behind the eight ball. And with COVID-19, we're significantly further behind the eight ball. We need nurses at all levels. We need nurses at the LPN, RN, and BSN level, and Vermont Technical College is the only school that provides that education in the state school system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Great. Next is Siobhan Anderson Judkins. And she will be followed by Virginia Record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you for taking my comment. I am a Northern Vermont University Johnson campus alumni, as well as a graduate student at NBU Johnson, as well as a public safety officer on our campus. My question is for the board, but mostly for you, Mr. Spalding. The VSC mission statement states, "For the benefit of Vermont, the Vermont State College System provides affordable, high-quality, student-centered, and accessible education, fully integrating professional liberal and career studies and consistent with student aspiration and regional state needs. Yet this proposal seems to not put the student focus or meeting the regional needs, especially in the Northeast Kingdom. Can you please elaborate how the decision to shutter the three campuses meet the criteria of the mission statement?"
We are going to have to expand our ability to offer programming in different ways. And I emphasize that, look, it's not like we want to shut the campuses, but the budget is such that, you know, we can't afford the amount of money we're losing. And the campuses have a lot of expenditure that go along with them. And enrollment has not been growing as fast as the costs have been growing. So it's a heartbreaking situation. It's not that you want to put people out of their university dorm or their local apartment to live in, era a particular residential campus, and recognize the pain that's going to be involved with all that. But it really comes down to, do we have the ability to adjust our configuration so that we can be sustainable into the future? And, you know, staying in the same configuration doesn't necessarily mean the best interest of the state of Vermont.
Thank you, Jeb.
So next is Rachel Lacome. I believe Virginia Record is not in the meeting now. So Rachel Lacome, followed by Ryan Welborn. Rachel? Rachel Lacome?
Hi, can you hear me? Sorry about that.
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you very much. I will try to keep this brief. My question is a little convoluted. I'm not sure how familiar you are with Goddard. They do residency programs, so they will bring students in for a few weeks, and they will give them all of the foundational training and information that they need. And then they will commence with a distance learning while they finish their programs. Have you considered a model like that for students at VSC? And in the MFA, have you considered bringing the campuses out to institutions for their MFA residencies, for example, to raise additional revenue streams?
I missed the last part a little bit, Rachel. There was something in the sound.
Sure.
As far as adopting low residency programs, that's certainly something that people discuss, and it's something we ought to be working towards in the future. But there, you know, there may be some of those that are colleges now. They're certainly trying to do shorter courses. I don't know if any of our presidents want to weigh in on that issue, but it's certainly something that we ought to be trying to develop in the future. And I missed the part about the MFA, too, so.
So I was wondering if you had considered, while these campuses are laying empty anyway, if you're planning to close them, why not instead rent them out to other institutions with MFAs who need places to do residencies for their writing masters or what have you?
I think that's an example of the kind of creative thinking we need to figure out how we can, you know, take advantage of those resources with other parties. So I'm glad you gave that as an example of something that we might be able to expand.
Okay. And Chancellor Spalding, I appreciate that I don't have much time and that everyone's time is valuable here. I just want to say, I was not there for last night's livestream. I heard you had made a comment saying that there are several students who will not be able to succeed when these campuses are closed. And I would like to say, as a Linden State alum, I would have been one of those students. I understand that this is an impossible position, but I would really encourage the board to press the state and to bring in the human element and that you are serving vulnerable populations and people who need a little extra help.
Yep.
Thank you, Rachel.
And so next is Ryan Welborn, followed by Madison Hennenberry. Ryan Welborn.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much.
I agree with someone who spoke earlier that I'd appreciate having more time if there's another way for us to have another platform to hear from people. I think that's the most important voice to be heard right now. But quickly, I'll just let you know a little bit about myself. I'm a prospective student who is a training clinical mental health counselor, planning on to continue my education at Johnson State College and the Wellness Center starting in August. Many people like myself have planned to rely on these state colleges to continue their education and develop their skills, and I can't help but think of the high school seniors who have given up countless joys in finishing high school, like prom and graduation, who are now being told that their college track is being stripped from them. Many of these students won't be able to find an alternative schooling option since early decisions for a lot of schools are typically due in the second. And then seniors for later applications are in January first and March. So if these students, including myself, will have to take at least until January off from education before we can begin again. Yeah, I really wish that we had more time to talk. This seems pretty unusable.
We do, yeah. I understand, and it's, we do have more people, I think, than time this evening. I will just acknowledge that. Next is Madison Hennenberry, followed by Jennifer Hip.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Oh, perfect. Hello, my name is Madison Hennenberry, and I'm a senior at NBU Linden. On the VSCS website, you can locate the financial statements. The VSCS has approved from the years 2012 and 2019. Although Chancellor Spalding was not the chancellor to approve the renovation title Castleton State Project 2012 that cost over $12 million, the VSCS as a whole did approve this renovation. Spalding is responsible for approving the renovations within the years 2013 through 2019. Now, not including the year 2015, Spalding has approved renovations of Castleton University that total roughly $3.8 million. On the other hand, NBU Linden didn't even receive $750,000 throughout those years. As of 2019, Castleton University's deferred maintenance was just under $12 million, and Linden's deferred maintenance is just under $9 million. Why are we putting so much money into a school that still needs millions of dollars to fully repair? This leads me to believe that this is the perfect storm of events leading to the merger of Linden and Johnson.
And apologies there. I know it is a little abrupt for people. Next is Jennifer Hip, followed by Mary Findley.
I wouldn't mind just saying, though, I appreciate those comments, and I think it's great that you can find those financial statements and look at them and understand them on our website. But I did start in January of 2015, and I don't believe that, other than things that have come through the capital bill allocations that all the colleges get and all the residential colleges, and a little tiny bit for CCV, but mainly the residential colleges have all lived within that. So since I've been chancellor, and I'm not proud of this one way or the other, you know, I don't think we have issued any new debt for Castleton. We have refinanced debt across the system to save money and have, taking advantage of lower interest rates.
Thank you, Jeb.
Yes, so Jennifer Hip is our next speaker.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jennifer Hip. My daughter is a first-generation out-of-state sophomore at NBU Linden from Pennsylvania. Three years ago, when she started her college searching, she attended a college fair at her high school. UVM was represented, SUNY Plattsburgh was represented. Not a single VSC school was represented there. During public comment, the first time Jeb tried to close Linden, my daughter asked why VSC wasn't marketing to any southern states. When his number-one backing to this decision is declining enrollment, after that meeting, a staff member from Linden reached out to my daughter to see if she would be an ambassador. She said yes. Nothing ever came of that. So other than closing schools, what actions have actually been taken in trying to increase enrollment and get more students when Jeb constantly says that enrollment from Vermont residents is declining?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And next is Mary Findley, followed by Christina Olcott.
Welcome, Mary.
Ms. Mary Findley?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm a faculty member at VTC, and I think VTC has been a little underrepresented here. I just want to thank you for being here and considering our thoughts, but I do have to say, as a colleague, myself and my colleagues found out about this through a leaked press release on social media on a Friday afternoon during the start of our finals, the worst possible time with a vote to happen on Monday. To say that we feel that this is already a done deal and we're being placated with a week is an understatement. If you don't want to close down the campuses, Chancellor, don't. You say this is sustainable. You're putting the nail in the coffin of the VSCS. I can tell you, we met for an hour and a half today. We have a lot of ideas. If you would only let us give them to you. And until you've taught a student and had them crying in your office, you will never understand what you're going to be doing to this state and these students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I can assure you that there is nothing but genuineness in our discussions and our schedule. No decisions have been made. And we do acknowledge that we need to make decisions quickly, but this is not a sham. This is a genuine pause as we continue to listen to you and to others and to work closely with our constituencies and colleagues as we work our way towards a decision that will be coming within a week or so.
Thank you. Next speaker is Christina Olcott, followed by Beth Foy.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. So rural health areas are experiencing healthcare shortages and the detriments of social determinants of health at twice the rate as urban areas are. Nurse programming gives people in rural areas access to train in their profession in a non-traditional manner that works for them, and they go on to provide excellent community-based care as we're currently doing during this time of COVID-19. How do I know this? Because I attended VTC at Linden. I received a high-quality education from well-prepared, outstanding instructors. I graduated in 2015 and have gone on to obtain my master's in nursing degree. It is imperative that you think long and hard about. It is imperative that you think long and hard about this decision before making a plan to close down the VSC campuses.
Thank you, Christina.
Just one quick comment. I think President Bolton would want to maintain what she had in the northern part of the state or others either.
That's correct, Jeb. If the NVU campus ends up being closed at both Johnson and Linden, we will have to relocate those programs, the nursing programs currently on those two campuses to another location. But we're prepared to do that, so we can keep all the locations going.
Thank you.
And next is Beth Foy, followed by Jasper Billig. And again, Mr. Chairman, per your direction, we are trying to make sure we take folks who haven't signed up before.
Thank you.
Yep, so again, Beth Foy.
Thank you. I would just like to remind the trustees that you do not work for Jeb. He works for you. That's the first very important point I'd like to make. Secondly, Jeb says that he listens to the community. Clearly, he's gone out into these communities and listened and not done a thing with his listening. It all comes back to the models he keeps referring to, which have nothing to do with the vitality of the state of Vermont. So I would just like you to consider the actual impact on the state once again. And just remind you that Jeb does not pull your strings. He's not in charge of your decisions. You are the board, and you're in charge of your own decisions. I would also just like to mention that UVM also seems to have a lot of ties to this board. Please do not be biased toward a school that does not have a majority of Vermonters attending. The population of Vermonters attending public college is what matters.
And apologies there.
I just need to make a comment, because I know this has been in some of the correspondence, that it's a new thread today about the presence of UVM employees on this board. There are no UVM employees on this board. I don't know where that understanding came from. During my working career prior to my retirement, had a relationship with UVM. None of our trustees are UVM staff members. Just, I don't know where that started, but I noticed it was showing up in some of today's correspondence. Yasmin?
Thank you. So next is Jasper Billig, followed by Arianna Moran.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I'm not here to criticize you guys. I think you guys are doing awesome. This is more for the state of Vermont. The state of Vermont is always telling everybody that we need younger generations. And I think that closing these down puts a pin in the coffin and allowing younger generations to leave Vermont. So to the state of Vermont, we need your help.
Appreciate your thoughts, Jasper, and your brevity. Thank you.
Great. So next is Arianna Moran, followed by Tom Hardy.
You guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. I'm a current sophomore at the NVU Linden campus in the Exercise Science Program. I know you've heard a lot about the amazing programs that these campuses have had, but I'm going to add to it a little bit more. This is the only accredited program in Vermont and New Hampshire. This program is recognized as one of the best in the United States, and the faculty here make it a point to help each and every single student become successful. I have lived in Vermont my entire life, and I was planning on, I was not planning on leaving. But if you close these campuses, I have to leave to get the education that I deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Tom Hardy, followed by Eric LaMontaigne.
Welcome, Tom.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Chancellor. You all sat? You hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm going to speak specifically about VTC if I can, as somebody who went there in 1973. My brother went there in '69. And I had to go back again to get my teaching license, by the way. Never would have been able to do it if it wasn't for the VSC system. What I'd like to propose is that a blue-ribbon commission be formed with others such as myself that have served in state government, particularly in areas that are served by the college, like agriculture, and come together and brainstorm some ideas with you and the president, the trustees, to come and see if we can come to some solution here. And I also want to salute the hard work of all of you, and especially when I hear these students, young folks, coming on and hear their courage to come on and speak to you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Next is Eric LaMontaigne, followed by Anthony Neri.
So, yes, my biggest concern about this whole process has been the absolute utter lack of transparency. Despite this being a long-known issue, there's been no real effort to inform the public on the severity of the situation until recently. To give you two examples of opportunities that were missed, in 2019, your white paper stated that Chancellor Spalding reiterated the importance of VSCS, staying alert and proactively searching for ideas to secure the future. A noble call to action, but there's nothing in your board meetings to say that that was ever followed up on. There were clear red flags. You did nothing to inform the public and let us know that this was happening. And again in June, the Board of Trustees is embarking on a strategic initiative first to clarify and communicate the urgent challenges facing higher education. What happened to clarifying and communicating? Why didn't we know about this then? You never thought to involve the people whose livelihoods and futures were at stake, and this is extremely shameful, especially for the legislators sitting on this board. You deserve to tell us what was going on. You are the reason we're in this position.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. In fact, we received over 200 responses to our calls during the "secure the future" period when we encouraged people from throughout the Vermont State Colleges community to bring ideas and proposals and questions to us. And those questions are all, I know they were an exhibit in one of our committee meetings, so I presume that those are all available online if somebody wants to see what that input was. And it was reviewed by this board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next is Anthony Neri, followed by Alicia Mattoon.
Welcome, Anthony.
Good evening. I haven't been to a trustees' meeting since 1987, so, thanks. I understand it's a great deal of work, and there's no question about it. But I don't know who the legislatures are. I've been out of the loop for years. And I think a lot of us have. These institutions are vital, particularly to the northern half of the state, and we could speak to that for a long time. But the state of Vermont itself used to provide 50% of the money, and I realize it provides 16%. I believe it would be an atrocity to do anything before the state legislature had to stand up publicly and say they want to watch these institutions go away. And I don't care what you have to do to get 2% of that federal money. You grab that $20 and you keep it, and you make them, make them tell their constituents why they're shutting the state colleges down, face to face. Because these are vital institutions. Vital. Anyway, call your legislator.
Thank you, Anthony.
Next, Alicia Mattoon, followed by Patty Palladino. Alicia? So Alicia seems to have left the meeting, so Patty Palladino is next. And she will be followed by Faith Poirier.
Patty?
Patty Palladino? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Patty Palladino. I'm the mother of a Linden, Vermont freshman. And I appreciate you taking the time to listen to all of us. The question I have is, if we, your Vermont schools have received the CARE funding from the federal relief package, why wasn't that enough? And my other question would be, I have received no correspondence regarding a refund at all for room and board, so it's hard to believe that COVID is the reason that you're closing, because the impact, if that was the case, we would have had a refund and you would have had a loss of money. So those are the things I can't wrap my head around, and I would hope to have an answer on that. We have emailed several times with no answer on a refund of room and board. And I'd gladly give it up, as long as the school stays open. And I don't understand how schools like Harvard can be getting great funds from the COVID Relief, the CARE Act, but you're not getting enough to keep you open, at least for a year, anyway.
So that seems like one that I could just briefly answer. The CARE as higher education money was allocated based on enrollment, and particularly enrollment of Pell-eligible. But, you know, obviously, with the waiting for Pell-eligible, but a significant waiting. But the bigger the institution, the more you would get. And it has nothing to do with the relative wealth of the institution. I'm not sure if that's right or not. I think they wanted to get the money out fast. I would have preferred, you know, out of self-interest, if they just gave it to public colleges and universities, but it went to all. The Vermont State College is getting $6 million, $3 million to assist students who were impacted, excuse me, by COVID-19. And I know that money became available, excuse me. I had to rush down to a little dinner before we started last week, and the colleges are working to get that money out. They are handling the refunds themselves. What we said as a system was just to, because we are, you know, a little strapped for cash, that we would pay those out within 90 days of the time that the students vacated the dorms. So, you know, it is coming. And our colleges are, I assume, are communicating, but if they're not, we should more.
Thank you, Jeb.
And that leaves that there will be $3 million in the CARES Act that could be used to help cover losses for the institutions. And our losses are going to be a minimum of $5.6, probably more like $9 million. So it's very helpful, but it does not cover.
Thank you, Jeb. Trustees, we have only eight people remaining to speak. If we could ask Yasmin to close the addition of names, go ahead and listen. And if possible, speakers, rather than present us with something that needs a dialogue back and forth, it's very easy to email us with questions that need answers. I think that way we would be able to make time for our eight remaining speakers on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to note, those are eight new speakers who didn't have the opportunity to speak last night. So next is Renee Fortin, followed by Faith Poirier. So Renee? Renee Fortin? I'm going to go on then to Faith Poirier. Is Faith here? Okay. I will go on to Eleanor Harrington, followed by Donna Habershaw. Is Eleanor Harrington here?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, this is Faith.
Oh, okay, great.
Welcome, Faith. Go right ahead.
Faith Poirier, go ahead. I don't know if there's a connection issue. Faith? It's not, hello, Faith, go ahead.
Hi, was I speaking the entire time or no?
We haven't heard you at all.
Oh, but it said I was on. Okay, sorry, I'll start over. So I'm a student at NVU Linden, and I'm a junior in the Exercise Science Department. I'm here to speak to you about our Exercise Science Department and how this merged into Castleton University is not ideal for us or any of the departments in any of the institutions. Being a junior in the department, I have learned so much from my peers and my absolutely outstanding professors, Dr. Ladue, Dr. Goulet, and Dr. Pascal. I would not be the person I am today without their love and support. Students in this department have described the school and department in one word. Here are their words: inspirational, connected, extraordinary, accredited, transformative, one-of-a-kind, irreplaceable, and last but not least, family. NVU Linden and the Exercise Science Department are my second family and my second home. If you were to shut down our school, not only would you be depriving us of the incredible education and outstanding professors that we have here at NVU Linden, but you would be separating the family that we have known to grow and love. You may see a small school struggling financially, but I see a small family, a second home, in an NVU community. Thank you.
This is 10 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Eleanor Harrington is next, followed by Donna Habershaw.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Eleanor Harrington. I'm an international student at NVU Linden in my senior year in the Exercise Science Program. I transferred from Central Maine Community College after graduating with my associate's degree. Immediately upon joining the Exercise Science Program, I was welcomed with open arms into a nurturing community. My professors have taken their time of their own to help support me in the last few months and help me figure out what paperwork I need in order to work in this country after obtaining my bachelor's degree. They have had Zoom meetings in their own time just to talk about me and my future. Not only does this support me, but it allows for great foundation to be built for other international students coming in. After all of the college's hard work to help the international students, it would now be wasted if the school was shut. After transferring once and realizing the reality of how difficult it is, I lost credits and therefore money and time, and it's not something I want to do again. I came 5,000 miles to study here, and now this one decision destroys all I have worked for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eleanor.
Thank you. Donna Habershaw is next, followed by Eric Donerkeel.
Yes, hi. Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to thank President Collins, first and foremost, for representing NVU with phenomenal class. We are all proud of you, President Collins. Also, as an educator of over 30 years, and more importantly, a parent of a student enrolled in the Broadcast and Digital Communications Program at NVU Linden, I am compelled to speak up tonight to let you know how this school has changed my son's life better. From the moment our son stepped foot on this campus, he could sense a feeling of a truly commuting caring community at NVU. Many students are looking for a small academic setting that the majority of colleges do not offer. His professors have been mentors, role models for him to strive to do his best. They know him as a person, not as a number, like my college experience was. We live in Rhode Island, I wanted to say that. And basically, there's no other school in our region that offers this program that our son's enrolled in. So not only does Vermont need NVU Linden, but the whole New England area needs NVU. Please, please save NVU.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna.
Next is Eric Donerkeel, followed by Stephen Iroldi.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So my name's Eric Donerkeel. I am about to go into my senior year at VTC in Randolph. Due to some family restrictions, I'm currently living on the campus because of some family incidents that have happened. But first off, I would like to thank Dylan for putting your contact number online and genuinely wanting to hear from us. But back to the reason we're all here, I want you guys to understand how life-changing VTC has been for me. I've represented Vermont Tech and the Vermont State College System for the past four years at the national level, and I have placed in the top 10 in the nation every year. And I've even brought back a national silver medal for Vermont Technical College and the VSC.
This is 20 seconds.
So far at VTC, this has been an opportunity I've been able to have. And getting rid of our campus, this is not something that students in the future will be able to partake in. But this won't be something that is possible. With this, we also host state conferences, which has a direct pipeline to younger Vermonters joining our colleges. And this proposal will kill this pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Next is Stephen Iroldi, and then our final speaker on the list is Eric Wiegler.
Thank you. Stephen?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Yes, we can.
Excellent, great. So my name's Stephen Iroldi. I am the Director of the Vermont Academy of Science and Technology at Vermont Technical College. Evening, Pat. Thanks for the meeting this morning. So I just want to point out, we've had a couple of vast students speak. And Jasper, if you're still listening, thank you for that heartfelt message. So I just want to point out, we've had a couple of VAST students speak, and Jasper, if you're still listening, thank you for that heartfelt message. Um, and I really just want to echo what I've heard a couple of them say. Um, you know, if you give this community the time, we can put together uh, something that is in line with the vision of the state college system. We can actually create something better. We can grow offerings in more places by leveraging our relationships with tech centers and businesses. So what I really just want to do is encourage you to keep doing what you're doing. I think you're all coming from the right place. And Jeb, Pat, I know you guys get all the flack because you're the leaders, but I want you to know that, you know, we're behind you guys. We're just here to offer your thoughts. Um, and I, again, Pat, thanks for this morning's meeting. I think that that was a good beginning for everybody to kind of get things moving. So remember, VAST was created to create opportunities for equal access to college throughout the state of Vermont. Same as early college, let's keep that vision going. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephen. Um, and uh, we do have one more speaker, but I misspoke. It's Dr. Andrea Silva McManus.
Welcome.
Dr. McManus?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'll be very brief. First, I want to thank you uh, for all your hard work and your incredible long day yesterday. Um, Jeb, I wanted to let you know uh, that I sent you an email yesterday. I want to um, offer any help or assistance I can. Jeb, since we worked together, I did a doctoral degree in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies at UVM. I also have a ton of grant writing experience and I've never uh, written a grant that wasn't funded and at the department I brought in over ten million dollars, so not working at the current moment and um, I'm free to help you, so I'm just throwing myself out there. I've always been a solution-oriented person. I think Jeb knows that. So um, if, I don't know how, I, I can just give you my uh, I, and then I'm a proud graduate of Castleton from nineteen eighty-six and hello, the president of Castleton. I don't even know how to pronounce your last name, and we haven't met yet, but we will. So should I just like give you my phone number and my email right now?
Why don't you give it to, can you give it to Yasmin?
Please do. Please send me an email.
I'll send you an email. Yeah, so just your, your first name, dot, last name, and then be, okay, and the VSC's whatever, okay. So please call on me. I, I want to be of support to you and and I really liked it, Jeb, when you stood up yesterday when somebody told you you should all stretch. And I watched the entire seven-hour thing and I was like, nobody is hydrating enough. Okay.
Well, that's what happened last night when I got leg cramps.
Yeah, okay. So I, so who am I emailing again?
Yas, Yasmin Zeßler. I'll follow up with you. Thanks.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Good luck with your work.
Yasmin, does that complete our work?
That does, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, once again to everyone who spoke. I think we had over two dozen new voices tonight. Um, again, we can't really make a, a responsible decision without hearing from you, and um, uh, we appreciate the respectful and constructive tone that everyone brought to their conversation this evening. Uh, Jeb, prior to going into executive session, is there anything that uh, we need to cover in public session, sir?
No, if, 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 if the proposal the chancellor brought forward were to go forth, uh, we would be considering certain programs that the professors might want to come and that would might make sense at Castleton. There also is overlap, and you know, I know it's a, it's a, it's a very, very highly regarded program uh, at Linden, the Exercise Science Program. My, my recollection is President's Gulf, for that Castleton does have an exercise in sports program as well. They all have slightly different ones. A criminal justice might be different on one than the other, but many of the students that are, are served at, at NVU campuses, not all for sure, but many would find those programs uh, at, at Castleton uh, or, or other institutions in Vermont.
Church, I just wanted to um, say we should probably do a roll call of the trustees. I know all of them except Governor Scott are on the uh, are in the Zoom meeting, but just for the minutes, I think it'd be helpful just to run through to make sure uh, it's clear that everyone is here.
Uh, do, just, Jen, would you like to run that through?
Yes, I'm happy to do that, Church Heinz. Um, remember trustees, you're all muted. I will go through. Please unmute yourself when I call your name. Uh, Janet Bombardier.
Here.
Megan Clover.
Here.
Lynn Dickinson.
Yeah.
Peg Florrie.
Here.
Dylan Giambattista.
Here.
Izzy Gogarty.
Here.
Adam Grenold.
Here.
Bill Lippert.
Here.
Karen Luna.
Here.
Jim Masland. I know you're here, Jim.
He's waving at you.
Okay, uh, Linda Milne.
Here.
Michael Pichak.
Here.
And David Silverman.
Last but here.
That is a full contingent. Thank you, Chair Heinz.
Thank you. Okay. Then at this time, uh, trustee Dickinson, can you bring us into executive session?
Mr. Chair? Could I have your attention just for a moment, please?
Please.
This is Bill Everett. I, I, I would like to express public appreciation for the grace with which Yasmin has been helping us with our listening to uh, students, faculty, et cetera. Again, as I've said, I've been part of many public hearings. It is not an easy uh, task to do what Yasmin has been doing on our behalf and to do it with uh, thoughtfulness and grace. I really genuinely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate that.
Good work.
Hey, Church.
Pardon me?
Just one uh, item before we go into executive session. Um, just, we heard a couple of times today that folks wanted further opportunity to comment. I know we've all been getting a lot of emails, but maybe before the end of the week, we can set up a time designated just for additional public comment to take in uh, any additional thoughts before the weekend.
Uh, yes, we'll, we'll be chatting a little bit later. I, I, we had tentatively talked about an end-of-week uh, meeting to kind of catch up on the, on the matters of the week. Perhaps we can integrate those two things. I also want to mention that um, uh, I think most trustees, if they've been logging, are now probably well over thirteen, perhaps even fourteen hundred uh, email responses. And I, I know that trustee is handling them in a different way. I would marvel if we have anyone who has written a personal response to every one. Uh, but most of us have written many of you, and it's just important that um, I think some of us, in the interest of paying attention to your feedback that's been coming that way, have been making the effort to read each one, and that really precludes just in terms of human stamina and time, the opportunity to write back on each one. But if, so if you did not get a reply, it may be because people took the time to read, even though they didn't have the time to send you a note. Um, in the same way that the verbal uh, testimony we've had last night and today have been valuable, the emails have just been wonderful. There are, there have been some curios, I guess I would say, but by and large, they have been constructive, heartfelt, and very, very much welcomed. I'm looking for trustee Dickinson. There you are.
Okay, I move that the VSC Board of Trustees enter executive session pursuant to 1VSA Section 313 Subsection A1B. For the purpose of discussing labor relations agreements with employees, because premature general public knowledge of these discussions would place VSC at a substantial disadvantage, it is appropriate for the board to enter executive session. And I further move the board enter executive session pursuant to 1VSA Section 313 Subsection A3 to discuss the employment of a public officer. The board does not anticipate making a final decision regarding any such public officer in an open meeting, but if it does, it and shall explain the reasons for this final decision during the open meeting. And 1VSA Section 313 Subsection A6 to discuss records exempt from the Vermont Public Records Act. The board does not anticipate taking any action during executive session. Along with the members of the board, President, at this meeting, honest, in its discretion, the board invites the chancellor, the VSC General Counsel, and Associate General Counsel to attend portions of this session. So moved.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Trustee Pichak. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor of going into, into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. We will go into executive session. For those who have been uh, participating with us this evening, we anticipate being in, in executive session for perhaps extended time. No actions, no decisions will be made. We will come out of executive session at some point. It could be about ten o'clock or later. And at that time, we will simply adjourn the meeting. So we appreciate your being with us. If you do want to wait around for, to hear us adjourn, you're welcome to do so, of course. But um, that would be our plans for the remainder of the evening. So at this point, the trustees will disconnect from this particular Zoom program and transfer to a separate program for the executive session. Thank you, one and all.
Chairman, church?
Yasmin, we wanted to go to midnight, but then we, but then we decided to be nice to you.
I appreciate it.
Three, we have a quorum. The uh, Board of Trustees has, has come out of executive session. As we indicated, when we went in, we did not anticipate taking any action or anticipate any decisions coming out, and we have, and we are not uh, making any, any decisions. We have no more actions for the evening unless someone has something that they want to bring up under the heading of uh, other business. Any other business for this meeting? Then I would entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Do you need a second?
Second.
And we have one. Thank you, Linda. Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourned this meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned and stay tuned for further information about subsequent meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. And Yasmin, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you all. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Aye.
Good night.
Bye.
Thank you, Yasmin.
You're welcome and thanks again, Bill.